I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here and those who are watching online. First of all, we will have the Clergy Police Agents red by manual redundant manual street. And the prayer is going to be done back into.
Dear head president, thank you for today and for the opportunity to gather together and work for your good. I ask that you guys direct the hearts and minds of our county leaders for protection for our citizens. But always remember that we are meant to be examples of your love and grace in our actual show right here. Be with us and always say you do in your name we pray.
Amen. As many of you probably know, we've started having some of our local municipal association members come and give a division to the board supervisors. And today we're honored to have with us Pastor Ortega Turner. And she's with the, it's Pastor Ortega Turner Cross from Mount Zion Temple. And Pastor, if you'd like to come forward then. Welcome.
She told me you already guys just played out trying to find out this is my first time. Yeah, like I don't know where to go.
We can always use more.
More friends? Father, you are good and your mercy endures forever. This is the day that you've made, we rejoice, we're glad of it. Father, I thank you for that as tonight as we get it. I thank you, God, for the things that are going to be for the next night. Father, I thank you that in every decision and everything that is brought up, you receive all the glory. I thank you, Father, for wisdom on what to do, how to do, and when to do. Father, I thank you for giving clarity. I thank you for a spirit of peace. I thank you for a spirit of unity. I thank you, God, that out of this meeting, something good is going to happen and it's going to make your name great. In your precious mighty natural straight name, Jesus, amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of amendments for the October 13th meeting. So we're open for any comments or corrections. We have a motion to approve, so second.
Second.
A motion and a second on favor. And it's done and one extension, it's a motion passes. Next on the agenda is the financial status, by Lisa Richardson.
Ms. Madam Chairman, you have their front off, you are mostly financial report. And I'll just read you a briefly. As in the past, the first one we have is the revenue summary. And we're going to go ahead and go to page five, which is the thing, sorry, I think pardon page six. Which is the revenue received for that for November 12. And that'll be 28 million, 580,000 dollars. That's the revenue received here today. Then the next report you have there is expenditure summary. And again, I ask that people step up on to take five. Here we look at the expenditures through November 12 here today was 27 million, 734,000 dollars. So we are printing, we are about 835,000 dollars more revenue collections than expended so far this fiscal year. Your next page there is your October 18 report, November of this year compared to November of last year. I'm looking at that, about a million dollars, 175,000 dollar difference there. A lot of that could be attributed to CARES Act funding. Your next report is your deposit versus expenditures through the month of October, given previous years since 2013, 2014. If you're interested in asking any questions on that report. The next page is the county expenses and appropriations of this comparison this time of October 2020 to October 2019. Mainly if you look there about halfway down the page, the one that says subtitle, our October ending balance is 8,673,000 dollars. Compared to this time last year, it was 7,509,000 dollars. The next page breaks that down into more detail as far as spent and unspent appropriations. Since comparison between the two years this year versus last year, same time. The next page, we have our water sewer unselected and accounting taxes. And then the following pages are your treasures accountability report that shows the balance as of the beginning of October compared to the end of October.
Furthering questions or discussions for Lisa? If not, Lisa, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the payment of invoices, which you have on your desk. The first item is under the general accounting fund, the total county appropriation, 1,600,000. Your motion to approve. Is there second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Next is the appropriation for social services, 485,000.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Next is the school operating fund, 4,810,000.
Second.
All in favor?
And I abstain.
Motion passes with one extension. Next is the school debt and capital outweighing, 1,35,000.
Second.
All in favor?
I abstain.
The motion of first is one extension. Next is the town of Marion Fire and EMS, 7,136 dollars and 22 cents. All in favor? Motion passes. The town of Chi-Hai Fire Department, 7,136 dollars, 22 cents.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Next is the Saltwater Rescue Squad, 7,136 dollars and 22 cents.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. And next is the Chicago Bike Saving Crew, 7,136 dollars, 22 cents.
Second.
Second, I have a question.
Good.
I've come about a solid fire department. It's not part of this, I'm just curious.
These four funds are the state funds we get for EMS type.
Oh, okay.
Then EMS only.
Yeah. My name was EMS and fire and chose to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Weska, thank you, I have the same question. So thank you for clarifying that. So we need a vote on the Chicago Bike Saving Crew.
I need a motion.
And the first second.
I'll say it in a second.
All in favor? The motion passes. Next is the EDA Fund for 65,600.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. The next is a C DVG Food Pantry Fund, 433,975 dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Do we need to do any explanation on that?
Yeah, let's know that is a grant we got for the, for the four food pantries in the, in the county from the state. It's COVID related money, but basically it goes toward buying the supplies for them. Each of them have seen some, some decreases in their donations. So they can use this, it'll probably last until, I expect spring or summer of next year. So it also frees up their funds to be able to do other things where they need to do renovations or other upkeep.
Yeah, so that's a great resource for the community. Next is the Service Department Fund, 746.
Motion approved.
Second.
It was 6,500 dollars. All in favor? Motion passes. Next is the Sheriff's Department Fund, 748, for 4,919,37 cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. And finally is Recovery Court Fund, 749, in an amount of 872 dollars and 15 cents.
And second.
All in favor? Motion passes. That completes the discussion.
Sure, fucking cookouts without money. I ain't been in life.
The sheriff can answer that. Okay, well, I'm a little early for citizens' time. But has anyone signed that question? I think that's possible. Nobody's signed it. There's no one that signed it. Does anyone wish to speak? If not, we'll close citizens' time. Under our business, if there's unity day following up, and I guess Mr. Utz can give a lot, didn't he?
Yes, ma'am. We were supposed to, we have some folks that are coming to, to provide a bit of additional presentation. If it's okay, I'd like to ask that this be skipped for now and maybe come back.
We'll come back to it. And next is committee reports. And there's a building grounds committee meeting. Warrior, Heather Channing, would you like to give that report?
The building grounds committee met Thursday, November 15th. In attendance with myself and Mr. Atliff and staff members, Mr. Utz, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Williamson, and Mr. Spikes. We received bids for the cornerstone building. Two bids came in for that. One was from Mount Rogers CSD in the amount of 128,000 dollars. And the other from Campbell Wall Farm, an amount of 98,500 dollars. We discussed various options for the building and unfortunately those proposals were a little bit under what we were hoping they would be. After much discussion, Park District Supervisor Chris Ratliff made a motion to transfer ownership of the cornerstone building to Smith County Economic Development Authority and directs them to put out an RFP for a realtor to sell the property at a negotiated minimum price with profits to be split 50-50 with the county. We made that motion on the basis of we feel like a realtor could get more money out of it than we could asking for bids.
When I read this, that is kind of a prime piece of property. I was surprised that that came in so well. So surely a realtor will assess it more accurately.
And obviously with the, with the EDA as our arm for, for property and those types of things.
But did you all feel that was turned in the real one?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I mean, I think we'd always be better off to keep it than to sell it for them.
Right. And just as a reminder, I believe when this property was purchased for the purpose of putting in the parking garage, it was around 400,000 dollars that was spent on that property. So we're trying to recoup as much of that as possible. So again, Mr. Atliff made the motion and I made a second. And that is a committee recommendation that we would like you all to consider.
Ms. Madam Chairman, I asked questions.
Yes.
So, so I understand if we turn this over to the EDA, ARA, realtor, the decision to sell from that point on will be up to the EDA? Or are we simply taking what we got or where to go from here?
Well, we, we discussed a minimum amount that we would like to have, that's obviously greater than this amount. And we also talked about if the EDA can't sell it within 12 months. We obviously don't want to give it to them just to sit on it or take a low bid. So we kind of discussed the.
So there is a minimum amount that they can take along this in that figure?
No, that wasn't included in here. I believe we talked about a range of numbers, but.
150, 175 at a minimum is what, is what we threw out at the, at the committee meeting. To go in the house, the structure, I mean, if to turn it back into a house, you still want to invest a bit of money. But the bones of the building, it's 4,200 square foot building, it's, it's a good bones. I have no doubt 150, 175 minimum of a value plus whatever.
We're the commercial property right there.
As I say, is that cost a courthouse?
I think we tried to sell this, Lisa, you didn't pay on my member. You remember what the appraisal was on it then? We had an appraisal done?
I don't remember. I don't recall.
There should be a record somewhere. We had a appraisal.
I've done that for bids before, but I don't remember.
But I can, well, yeah, the appraisal was recent, didn't it?
I just said, see the county keeps losing money. Who pays 400,000 thousand dollars and then sell 150? That's not good enough to me.
I, I don't think, I don't see us getting 400 back out of it.
No, but still.
Purchase was almost a necessity to get parking garage done. And we realized we didn't need that parking garage, but honestly, sure, I don't think we'll get.
If the community, is, is this, this 150,000 dollars, does it go along with this committee recommendation? Or do we have a figure? Reason I'm asking is I hate to turn it over to anybody and we sell it for 90,000 dollars. You know, yeah, I get, we ain't going to get 400,000. But I'm, we ought to at least have 150,000. So when you involve a realtor, you know, they're going to get a cut. And I get you, the market, I get where the community's coming from. My main concern is where will we draw the line? I have no problem giving it to the EDA. I want to help them all I can. But, and they may make a better decision on minimum price than we have because we're business people. But I still like a minimum somewhere that make me feel better.
If you think about it, if you look at the bids that we got, go ahead and add that, I guess it's a 6% pre-commissioned from the realtor. You're probably looking at no less than 150 to start with. And that just evens us out with the bid. So if we want to try and pull in 150, I would say the minimum would be 165 range or 165, 175, whatever the board feels. But we did talk when we, at the committee meeting, we talked about 150 to 175, but I don't know if an exact number came in.
So how are they going to decide on which realtor listed?
From the RFT.
Oh, okay, good.
I don't have a problem with the like the realtor just making a comment. Any committee's recommendation, I would like to see a process to do it on.
Well, I think we should wait, I would like to see a quote of the value from the realtor who's a professional, wouldn't you?
Yes, I would. And also I'd like, I'd like for Lisa or Sean to go back and see what our last thing was. I know we done this before, a year ago, if, am I correct?
We did, we did once before. I don't remember seeing an appraisal, but I can look.
Well, we paid, we paid somebody for what, we actually put up two or three things per se. I remember what the other two was, but this building was one of, and we had them appraised so we could figure what the figure was. And I don't remember what that was. Again, I recommend that, I'd like to see another, what the appraisal is on it, where we're at.
Right. To be able to make an.
I don't have no problem with the committee's recommendation of a man. But I would like to know what the appraisal was and I would like to see a set of math. We're not going to take any lessons in this and we'll set up.
Okay. Mr. Atliff, do you want to amend your motion or do we want to wait? What's the question?
I guess I'm a little hesitant to put an under on it, to pin it down. I'd rather let the realtor come up with a, with a fair market value than from their professional perspective. I don't want to under-sheat or over-shoot. So I, I hear what supervisor is, is referred to, but it's out of my realm. I don't, that's not my area of expertise, I own a property. That's what I defer to them.
Can I make a recommendation? Then if there's, if there's at least some agreement, I don't necessarily need a vote, but an agreement on the board that the transition to the EDA is a good idea. We can at least go and, and figure out the process on the realtor before anything's signed. Come back to the, the board and report on what that minimum is to make sure that you're comfortable on, on the transition if that's.
I'm good with that. I mean, if y'all don't mind, maybe they can research and see if, if you can find out what the last appraisal was. I know it's going to be easier to go away, but that gives us a base. I ain't, I agree with Mr. Atliff that, well, that's not my profession either, but I don't lay my trust in some realtor. He totally, I mean, I want some say.
Right. That was kind of the exact discussion we had in the meeting too. And that's one of the reasons we went back and forth on including numbers because we don't want to lock it in on that. But at the same time.
I'm good at not locking it in, but I would like a little more information if y'all don't mind. If they, they bound to be somewhere or another, I want the last appraisal was.
Also, don't we get, add the buildings that the county owns appraised for insurance purposes? Because those may be a lot of.
That's not necessarily sale value.
Not sale value, okay. So, so do we want to enter the caveat from Mr. Stevenson to the motion?
Would, would we put a reserve amount yet to be determined?
So that's what's due.
Is that the language we could put in there? Transfer it to the EDA with the reserve amount to be determined?
I would, I would be inclined to vote with you if you just table it till we had more information till your next meet.
It's not super rush, I don't think, but yeah.
Okay. So are we in agreement then to table this and.
I am. I'm not trying to defeat you because I'm in agreement with you. I just like a little more information of it.
Okay.
I have no problem with being going to the EDA. But I like a figure somewhere or another, you know? I hate to say.
Suspect 218.
I think that's what.
So it's like 260 on the assessment.
Probably. And usually that's pretty concerning.
Yes.
And you know, most real estate I've ever bought are, usually the assessed value is pretty close to what it's worth. Maybe on what he's pulled up there, that's a good job. But I would think of starting out, I figure selling that anyway. So I think when you get less than what your assessed value is, maybe we'll shoot ourselves in the.
We've done it on a couple of things and I think we need to continue with it. So we don't need to go down this, do we?
I think if you'd rather table it, we can come back with some more information next week. That'd be fine.
Okay.
The only thing to do would be to table it, come back with more firm information.
All right, thank you.
Maybe we could, if y'all feel good, we could bring Mr. Utz at least to reach out to a real estate and see if they're interested in what they think the value they could get for us. If they say 100,000 dollars, then we don't need to be paying no realtor. So that's just my opinion there.
No, I think that's a good one. All right, so we're going to direct Mr. Utz to get further information to the boards, okay? And table it.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Laurie, go ahead.
Sir. The next item that we discussed was the status of the Riverside Community Center, which is currently occupied by the Riverside Rute and Club. The center has been used for a voting location in the past, but there have been accessibility issues. The county owns the building and the, the Rute and Club has been leasing the location and that lease has expired. We had an in-depth discussion about the condition of the building and the use of it for a voting location is, is just not going to be, going to work out in future because of all the accessibility issues. So Park District Supervisor Mr. Ratliff made a motion to transfer ownership of the Riverside Community Center to the Riverside Rute and Club. The county will notify the electoral board of the transfer of ownership and I seconded that motion. Just to note there, the reason we would notify the electoral board is because they'll have to find a different voting location or determine what they're going to do.
So is the Rute and Club being able to take any of our ownership of it?
I believe so. They really like that building.
It isn't all building and a lot of the chairs needed.
It closed in 88, so you're at the, that school closed.
You mean they don't want to do that?
The Rute and.
Cookouts.
They've done razors. They've done, I know when I was head football coach, they would do like our banquet in the cafeteria there. They would cook the food and we would pay them. Then we'd hold the banquet there and they'd do different, different events there, so.
That was one of the other buildings that we had up that I couldn't remember. And there was an appraisal on it, but I'm all for the Rute and Club. And basically that ain't no building, it's going to fall now.
They don't want to be responsible.
Probably for whatever you can go out of.
Well, I think if it can be against the end, that's a good thing.
I'm just going to expound that as, from the discussion we had was that the building was falling into disrepair.
Yes.
Part of the election issue was the parking for the ADA accessible parking was at the point from where the building you're using. Because they had to go through a non, semi sidewalk, which is really not conducive for, for restricted access. So I think it's probably prudent to do this.
I agree.
Get it out of a liability issue and go on.
Yeah, thank you all for evaluating it. Okay, we have a recommendation from the committee, all in favor?
This is Albert Pacific Build, right?
Just for the. Okay, Laurie.
Thank you. The next item we discussed is the heating system for this building. A boiler RFP was done several years ago that has since expired. The previous RFP was very basic and did not include specifics for what was needed to properly heat the entire building. With the transfer of ownership of the building from the state to the county, water and steam was to be provided by the state for another one to two years before being turned off. At this time, the deed transfer has not been completed yet. We had, we also had a discussion, a little more in depth about properly heating the building. So even if we had a boiler right now, we hooked it up, it's not going to heat the entire building because of issues that exist there. So that previous RFP did not include fixing those issues to make sure the entire building was heated. So Park District Supervisor Chris Ratliff made a motion to hire a mechanical engineer to evaluate the heat needs for the building and develop the specifications to be put out for bid. That way we have a better idea of what we're providing or we're doing. So, and I seconded that motion, so that is a committee recommendation.
And I have some additional information if you don't mind. I've spoken with two different, we have a couple of different mechanical engineer on term contracts. And the, the price to basically go through the building, give us two options, at least two options, was the best price I got was 12,500. Basically what we did with the last RFP was, it was an RFP, we have 68,600 square feet, four floor building. Come in and give me a price on, I'm putting a boiler in. You have to build a building, the whole night. And that was it. It wasn't, you know, we need a 2 million BTU building, a boiler or whatever, you know, actual specifics. So that's why the boiler bids came in. So that's, there was almost 600,000 dollar difference between the bid prices. So I think we might get a better, a better price, hopefully better options too. If we, if we have someone to come in and give us some, some recommendations that know what they're looking at. That way we're comparing apples to apples.
You know, this has been an albatross since I've been on the board, Mr. Utz, and probably those of you who've been on here. It's just not the heating, it's also the structure of the whole building. And I know before we had asked for maybe an evaluation of the building.
It's not good, I live it every day.
So, is there any other comment? 12,500 is to evaluate the, they're giving. Will we be able to continue to contract with the state for the heat?
We do have, we did get confirmation that they will extend the, the steam for two years after we close on the, on the deed, after we file the deed. And that's still in the process of being put together. So we, we have a little amount of time before we.
Bill, you and Masto have a lot more history with this building too.
I'm sorry.
You've got more history on the board.
You know, I get that there's some repairs that need to be made and Mr. Utz and I have had this conversation. And you know, I've been in the building and, and construction in many different ways. construction in many different ways, and, you know, the state has given us this building, if we take it for one dollar.
Right.
One dollar. And if you will remind me, please, how many square feet is it?
I wanna say just, just shout sixty-eight thousand square feet.
Sixty-eight thousand square feet. When they got those twelve thousand dollars assessment, ask you how much it cost this county to build this size building. It's gonna be multiple million dollars. And if we have to put a couple hundred thousand dollars in, it's sure cheaper than, uh, eighteen million, twenty million. How far off am I on what a building like this would cost?
I wouldn't be surprised if it's not, if it's not any, if it's around two hundred dollars a square foot, I mean, every bit of it.
What's it come to?
Thirteen, fourteen million.
So, you know, at, at a price on a building that needs a new boiler system, it, it may be six hundred thousand dollars, I don't know, I'm not in the boiler business. You may need to do some rethings to pick, Lord, you've worked here. You may need to do some things, but as long as right now, the shape this county's in and where we are, we're talking about, even if we spend five million dollars on this building, we're talking about, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, I just can't talk with this. We're still talking about a seven to eight million dollar savings. I just see no argument in that whatsoever. Now, I get that they are some employees, um, that the heat, maybe don't get your room as toasted as Eli. I get all of that, and I sympathize, and I'm for, I don't like the twelve thousand dollars, but if that's what the guy gets to make it right, then I'm for it. But I don't think you turn your head on something this size of building when somebody gives it to you for a dollar. Hey, it's a dollar. And you're from there, if you don't like it, sell it for a million dollars.
Of course, yeah. Well, and that's why I agree, we definitely don't wanna turn the building down. It's just, it would be nice to know overall, you know, what we could do, but the twelve thousand is the issue we're looking at now, so.
I don't think we're in the shape to build a twelve million dollar building.
No.
Now, you know, it needs new heat. It, it's, it's plain and simple, no argument. And we may have to come up with six hundred thousand dollars, but if we do, we have to come up with it. And, but, you know, I don't know, the elevator still works good, I think somebody got stuck in it one time, but, you know, right now, we need to accept this and move on, repair and try to make a few years out of it, so. We have no idea where this economy's gonna be in one more year. No matter what your politics are, it's changed, and usually the economy changes. Hopefully, we're better, but it's a bad, bad time not to be moving forward with the state on this building and making repairs.
Okay.
That's why we wanted to make sure that, that we take this extra step, because we don't wanna just go out and buy something, plug it in, and it don't work, because then we're wasting our money. But we could go back and spend even more money, so doing this, I believe, is.
You got my vote on that, but I don't wanna turn this building down, you know?
Oh, no. No. No, we definitely don't want to do that. So, Mr. Ratliff, if you have anything to add?
The only thing would be another piece of information that, that came out during the discussion was that even if we plug in a boiler and it works, there's still gonna be vacancies of not heating. And the comment was made that there are some rooms that are HVAC, like now, that have no heat to them, that we just put in a, a heat source and, and close that gap, to get as close to a hundred percent heating as possible. So, I think the engineer will, will show us where we need to reach, what we need to cover, and give us a basic blueprint of, of the various vendors to say, this is what we can do the job for.
Okay.
And compare it, a true comparison.
That's probably a good start.
Yes.
I agree with you that the bids were all replaced because there was no specific way to bid it. I had several comments from the people who did bid it, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna say it's worth twelve thousand dollars, but that's what they get, and that's what we gotta have. And, but maybe next time, we can get a bid where people can, people bid a lot closer. When there's a hundred thousand dollars difference between any bid, something right.
Right. Hopefully, this will remedy that, moving forward.
I agree.
And I will, I will say this, in working on third floor, that in the winter time, this end of the building, and that end of the building are probably twenty degrees difference, and, uh, it'll be so hot it might even you can't work, and on that end, people are freezing to death. I mean, it's just, it's a, you know, it's a dinosaur. And I was gonna say, and I agree, that we're, you know, we've gotta be very prudent with our plans, but I also would like for Mr. Yutt to be able to explore options, to see if we do have, it could be some things out in the community that would be more functional, because this building struggles with functionality as far as storage, things like that we need for the county. So, if there's a way of being more efficient that we can afford, I would certainly like to pursue that avenue if it's a possibility. So, as we, you know, there might be places, things to shut down, or whatever, that we can make some adjustments.
Did I hear too that I'm one of the floors that couldn't hold the weight of the textbooks?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I know that is what you said.
I, I think I had heard that I'm one of the floors, maybe it's through the floor floor.
We've had to move everything to the, to the ground floor.
Yeah, because structural. But anyway, I guess the thing before us right now is this, uh, evaluation by a mechanical engineer. It's a committee recommendation, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes.
Great, and then the last item that we discussed was some empty space at the courthouse beside General District Court that could be used for the Southwest Virginia Community Corrections Offices. Uh, just for everyone's knowledge here, that every county in the, in the region provides space for this group, uh, so Smith County is, they're wanting to do that as well. Uh, there is some funds that are remaining in the courthouse bond that need to be utilized, and those funds can be applied toward the renovation costs for the offices for Southwest Virginia Community Corrections, along with the replacement cost of a sewer pipe that is overdue for being fixed. Chris Ratliff made the motion to utilize remaining courthouse funds, funds to do necessary renovations to house the Community Corrections Offices and complete the sewer line repairs, and I seconded that motion, and that is a committee recommendation.
How much is in the funds?
We have about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars left. I, I would guesstimate, we'll probably spend eighty to ninety thousand on the renovations, but I have no idea what the sewer lines wanna cost.
And Chairman, I'm a little slow, and I hate to keep asking questions, because I know y'all people have been a lot quicker when I'm here.
I know.
That come in under what? That was, that building was estimated at what, twenty-three million, and they done it for what?
We said, I think they said, done for a million.
So, we're not talking about adding all those funds back, we're talking about some other funds.
This is the, the money that we, that we saved, that basically, we actually drew down, that's been sitting in a bank account.
That we've been paying on.
We've been paying on.
All right. Good enough.
Needs to be used, so.
Basically, I need to spend the money so I can close out the bond.
Okay.
It's not moving, I mean, you're a fancy question, David.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a committee recommendation, all in favor? Any opposed that passes your name? Do we want to go back to our regular agenda now? Mr. Yutt, do you want to?
Yes, ma'am. So, if we go back to the, um, item under Old Business, the Unity Day follow-up, you'll remember around two months ago, maybe even three months ago, uh, all the board members received an email from Mr. Herbert Clay asking for the designation of a, a Unity Day. Um, I was directed to go back and talk to Mr. Clay and try and figure out, you know, what, what is, what does he really mean, what's, what can we build on? Um, this has kind of, um, evolved. Uh, at the same time, there's a group, um, JEPC that has approached not only the town of Marion, but, um, city of Bristol, for us, us, you know, I expect they'll be approaching other elected bodies to at least start the, the process of, um, for, um, anti-racism, anti-hate, to try and pull, start pulling those people back, some people back together. Um, we have some, some folks here tonight that would like to, to speak more to it, uh, which you do have in your packet are two draft resolutions, one from the town of Marion that they passed recently, and one from the city of Bristol. Um, I don't, I don't have any, um, any action requested tonight, but I, I do expect that we can have some, um, maybe some, some good dialogue after they provide their input.
Let me take the bench, I'm having a friend. I'm here all the time.
I'm gonna give you all some information, just, just a little. This is just information on our website with JEPC, which is a nonprofit organization, and has our mission statement on it that you guys, um, can read. I'm gonna pull this down, it does actually, because I feel like I'm smothering in here, y'all got it, so. Um, we, um, initially have worked, just to give a little background, in Marion with Mr. Clay when he presented the Unity Day at the town council, um, and at first, we were in opposition of it being passed without the town or anybody in Smith County recognizing the issue of racism. So, in conversations, um, with Mr. Clay, we did come up with our goal, one of the goals that we had with JEPC anyway, was to dismantle racism in Southwest Virginia. So, in, in the talks with that, we did work with Marion, the town officials, in education, and, um, come to an agreement, but one of the, I'll just give you a little background with, um, the goal is for all people of color to feel safe, included and equal in their community in all facets. Um, we just feel like there has been, with everything that is going on with Marion, our issue, which racism exists in all areas. It's an uncomfortable conversation, I had a whole script on it, but I'm just gonna talk, because I've talked about it so much, but it's, it is something that we need to address in Southwest Virginia. The issues that I've seen in a lot of conversations, even with, um, Kayvon and I even was talking with Assistant to Senator Kane today, and conversations with Delegate, uh, not Campbell, uh, Wonkler, um, that in Southwest Virginia especially, I think there is the perception that racism is more prevalent. I do see more resistance. My, you know, I'm obviously white, raised, I have racist family members, but overall, it's just an uncomfortable conversation that some people, some others are just raised, that it's just normal, and until we're affected by it, we don't really do anything to act on it. Um, the reason that we have the goal with dismantling racism, legislation is one of the things that we want to do legislative change. So, dismantling racism, we're starting from the ground up, from local level, to we want it to be presented in the House to denounce racism, because it's a building block to be able to spread that message. One of the things that Delegate Wonkler said was, well, we can't change hearts. Well, we can't change hearts, but leaders can be leaders, and people will follow their lead. And I think we've come to a time where a lot of people in this area, and all over the country, different areas, have felt a little more comfortable to express racism, and that it's a time that we need, I think the moment for me, I've always felt, um, very, I guess, an advocate against racism, but the moment, I think, with the George Floyd death, definitely was a pivotal change in this country, because I think we all were on pause. Um, but I think it's definitely a time that we need to address the issue, and we want to be able to have leaders in this area to set the example. And then from that example, once they've denounced racism, to be able to build on that with committees or different, um, projects throughout the community, to be able just to educate, if there's education needed, to, um, be available for the school systems, um, housing, or whatever area within the towns, but just be able, first of all, to either to set the standard, are you a racist community, or are you not? Um, the thing with Marion, we talked about, my thing with them was, you know, you're under, was under a microscope with all of, you know, that happened with the stuff in Marion, and that it's time to either make that declaration. Um, but we presented to Bristol, they have signed it, and then made, the town of Marion has signed it, and then you guys had reached out to us to also, um, discuss it, and then we are presenting this within the House of Delegates, and then hopefully within the Senate in some form, we plan to meet with, um, Senator Kane. So, I will let Kayvon go over this, before I'm burning up in here, and talk a little bit more about it, um, and we have other information that we can provide to you guys and have conversations individually, is what we did with, at the town of Bristol and Marion, and any, I don't think if there's anything else, but I'll let them go.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Oh, Misty Whistle, I'm so sorry.
Misty, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Representative, thank you so much. Kayvon, welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name is Trevon L. Brown, and I'm the chairman of Justice, Equality, Peace, and Change. And Misty just told you guys about the resolution that we would like to present before you. I think that is a very political time, racism is a topic, politics are a topic, LGBTQIA people are a topic, and I think this isn't a Republican versus Democrat kind of issue, this isn't a hearsay hat, or, or sucking you guys out, this is everybody against racism and discrimination, basically, and I think this would be a good step towards unity for our community. Um, the town of Marion, Virginia, I think they are the first people to, um, adopt a resolution on this, uh, being we went to Bristol and talking to Taz who are right now in Abidin. Um, and I've also been having conversations with Mark Warner and Tim Kean, and I would love to be able to go to them and say, not only did our town do this, but our county did this, and they're making progress, encourage the goal of unity, encourage better, um, our community and the county. I mean, I feel like life, liberty, and justice, not everybody has that, not everybody feels comfortable in this same day and time. I know as an African-American, my little sister, she went up to the grocery store, and she texts me, and she says she was scared, and I said, why are you scared? And she said, a man asked me, was, I used to stand and tell him that, and he showed me his gun. So, that day and day, he was saying a threat, that, hey, I know you, I know your family, I don't like what you guys are doing, um, I get all kind of nasty looks, but I don't care. Um, currently, yes, we're trying to build unity, I think that this resolution right here would be a good thing for the county. Uh, so, yeah, only thing, guys, you guys like asking questions?
Mr. President?
I would like to see your pamphlet include one more thing, though. And I'm not a racist.
Oh, no.
Some of my best friends, one of my best friends, I am a, is, is someone of color. And one of my best friends, Chip Contate, been working with the search department, had color. I am not a racist. Uh, here's why I have a problem with your pamphlet, and I think this is very evident in our society. And, uh, you know, you have on your pamphlet, you have, um, ensuring African-Americans, people of color, women and children, all good things. I think it ought to include white people too.
Yes, sir.
Because I think they get racism sometimes, and I don't doubt you'll be, what you said about your sister, that's a bad, bad deal, I don't go for it.
Yes, sir.
I think sometimes white people get discriminated against for whatever reason, maybe the same reason that these people do, because we don't know, so.
Yes, sir. And it's all about interacting with each other and, um, searching stuff about, um, topics, about this stuff, so you can try to understand where they're coming from.
I, I, I do understand, but I'd like to see your pamphlet have white people on it.
Yes, sir.
I think they get discriminated against too. You know, I think black people do, in certain instances, and women do, most certainly, uh, but I think it's, you know, if we're gonna analyze it, if we're gonna make it ends, then let's put everybody out.
Let's put everybody, I got you, I got you, and this is what this resolution is, it's for everyone, I'm not trying to single anybody else, we want this to be for everybody, we want this to be for white people, black people, indigenous people, immigrants, everyone, because these are the people that are being talked about today, and I feel like with this political divide that we are having in our nation, this will make some of the people of color, um, feel comfortable, as well, that's why I feel, as well as LGBTQIA class members, this will make everybody, I think, feel a little more comfortable.
I'm all for your unity.
Mm-hmm.
And I want it to work, I want everybody in this world to get along, but I am not for violence, no matter what color.
Yes, sir.
I will never be for it.
None of us support.
I'm against it, and you know, uh, it's just the wrong way to do things, and I'm not saying black people do it, white people, that we all do.
We all do.
It's a wrong way, it's a wrong way to protest, it's a wrong way to solve anything.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm all for what you're doing tonight, if it includes everybody, and when we realize that everybody gets mistreated in a wrong way sometime, then we're working towards the future. And if you're gonna blame one section of the community, whether it be the police, the government, or whoever, there's nobody perfect. We can't punish the good people for the bad people, and I'm going back to instances, several things that's happened in the life, that your race, my race, we get to blame for, because a few bad people done the wrong thing.
Mm-hmm.[1785.62]
And that's where I draw the line. I'm not for the bad people, I'm for the good.
Okay.
Understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do. Thank you for your criticism.
But, you know, if you change your pamphlet, you might have a little more support out of it.
I got you, I got you. We'll definitely look into that. Thank you, guys, for hearing me, being respectful and proactive at this town.
I'd like to offer a comment, too, if I may. I understand, I think I understand where you're coming from, and the purpose of this, and I certainly welcome Supervisor Stevenson's comments there, but I would like to add on to it, true meaningful change is slow. If it's quick, it won't last. So my comment would be, slow is steady wins the race, just keep constantly, you know, don't give up. It's gonna get, it will be tough, but somewhere down the way, you look back and say, okay, we made a lot of change. It took a while, we don't, we don't really feel the change, because it was such a slow onset, but keep fighting the fight, you know, quickly, fight, you know what I mean? But just be, you know, slow meaningful change is coming to change.
Yeah.
Quick mutation doesn't last. Okay? We've got hundreds of years of not doing it, right, by multiple cultures throughout the country and world, so I for one, I'm trying to do better. I mean, I'm a perfect individual, I'm not perfect, I'm gonna win it in, and I certainly won't yet, so I personally am trying to be questioning my actions as to what the motivation is behind that.
Okay.
Who do I resist, of course? So that's all I have to say, is just be patient.
Yes, sir.
Keep working, but be patient, understand it's gonna gain a little slowly.
Travon, did you run track?
Yes, I did run track. I ran it in middle school and high school.
Who'd you run track for?
Um, Marion Senior High School.
You was very, very good.
No, 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 thank you.
I remember you.
Thank you.
How old are you?
I'm eighteen years old, just turned eighteen, I ran the seven.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, you was a good track man, did you follow it on any, or did you, was it, did you quit track after high school, or?
Coming of that, it's slowed everything down, it's just like, we haven't did it anymore. But I tried to pull it high school, I did it so far, and then now we're here.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I also feel like representation matters, and with the town, with the town governing it, and the county not governing it, if I go to, not William Wonkler, Mark Warner, and I talk to him, I think that he would love to hear that the county, and the county did it. And like I said, I'm not circling you guys out, I'm going everywhere, I'm talking to everybody, I'm looking to all kinds of questions and critiques.
Madam Chairman, if you don't mind if I make a comment, I just, anytime somebody can sit down and have a conversation, even if they're tough, I always respect that. So I certainly am thankful for different viewpoints, and it helps me understand better. So I just wanna, you know, commend this group, all of you for being here tonight, for bringing forth the tough, the tough topics to discuss. And as far as I'm concerned, it is gonna be full of all kinds of different people, and we gotta love each other here, too, because we're gonna love each other there. So I feel like this, the town of Marion has passed this resolution, I feel like that is inclusive, and if we have to change some birch to incorporate some different birches there, I think that's okay. But I certainly want Smith County to be a welcoming community, particularly when we're looking for people to move here, and live here, and have family here.
Economic development.
Absolutely, I think that's certainly important, so thank you for.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for being this afternoon, and I hope you have a wonderful day.
Travon, thank you. And I appreciate all the work that Robert Clay has done with this also. I've lived here all my life, it's a community that I think that those of us who have been here, or moved here, do take pride in, and one of my best friends I grew up with is of color, and I treasure her friendship dearly. So I think that you're gonna see this board as very receptive, to that desire to have unity, to support each other.
Thank you, guys.
One thing I forgot to say, when I was talking about respecting each other's opinion, I think that's really important, too, because regardless of what's going on nationwide, I wanna make sure that in our community, that we have respect for each other.
Yes, yes. Hopefully, we'll be able to have a roundtable, with key members in our community, I'm gonna have a Republican, a Black person, a white person, a Mexican, we just get together at a roundtable, and just talk about problems that we are facing, and try to understand each other.
I think Dr. Radcliffe had mentioned that to me, and I personally, but that's something we all agree on.
I actually sat down with a gentleman, and had a pretty eye-opening conversation. It opened my eyes as to the perspective of his community, and what they perceived their opportunities were, and it didn't match what I thought their opportunities were. So it was very eye-opening to me, that's why I said I'm questioning some of my thought processes myself.
Yes, sir.
And I'm still trying to figure out how to circle back and fix some of the problems, but I'm only one person, and so it's still, it's still here, working, I just haven't figured out how to execute it yet, but it's, he got to me. So I'm listening to him, I just haven't figured out how to deal with it.
I get through with that, I'll go with that. Well, thank you, guys, I feel wonderful this night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travon, thank you so much.
Hi, Alexandra Thompson. I'm not officially part of JUPC, I have Last Street Coalition of Southwest Virginia. I just wanted to step forward and maybe give you guys a little bit of understanding of where he's coming from, and where I think he's coming from, and where myself, as a black woman, is coming from. A lot of people wanna come to me and say, Black Lives Matter, I get it, I understand it, but all lives matter. And I just wanna clarify that all lives do matter. Everyone, every individual matters, because we have to make this community grow ourselves. But when we say Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter because they haven't mattered for so long. Nobody, black people have been oppressed for years, and generations, and hundreds of years. Four hundred years later, we're here, standing in front of a committee, asking for equality still. I think that it's time for a change, I think it's time to be progressive, I think it's, I think it's time for us to say, we denounce racism. It should not be that hard to say, I'm not a racist. It shouldn't be that hard to lead your community, to saying, we don't, we don't allow any of that to happen in our area. I didn't, I didn't come and plan to say anything, I just felt moved by this whole thing, like, it's still oblivious to some people that racism exists so close to home, and if you lived in a time of segregation, you knew racism. If you lived in a time of the Charlottesville craziness that happened, and the lady was hit by a car, you know racism still exists. So we can't deny it. I think right now, we're at the point to where we are on that slow-moving train, as you were saying. But we're at the point where it's time for everybody to stand up and say, we want to make that change. I think what the town has done is beautiful, and I think you guys, the Unity Day is a great idea, and that's all includes us, that includes, like you were saying, the white people as well. But I think it's time to finally say, yeah, we do see the racism, we do see that black people had the smallest gift, as you would say. That's all I have to say. But thank you for your time.
Very well said, thank you so much.
Well, I'm on duty, so I'll jump in line, and I, thank you all for letting us be here, and like I said, I'm on duty, so I don't get in a rush, but I gotta get out of here. One of the things, and I think Judy and Lori, I've kind of spoke directly, and I just kind of wanna give a little background. One of the things, actually this started, as far as my part, with Avery Cornet, we were kindly, well, not kindly, we were really disappointed, and when I say that, I'm not gonna say about anything locally, we were disappointed with what was going on nationwide. We talked Facebook, and we really were just, you know, really, really, really just sad with what was going on, not just Black, Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter, of course, for me, it's Red Lives Matter, but just everything. So we got talking, and, you know, we just happened to say over Facebook Messenger, I wanna do something, and I said, Avery, whatever you wanna do, I'll be right there behind you. Then happened to mention, well, Avery, you're on the town council, I want you to bring something in front of the council, and to do a Unity Day. And it's, the Unity Day has migrated into what we're discussing here, which is a good thing. The Unity Day was set up, in our minds, to bring everybody in, to sit down, under, and I'll say this, under the God, under God, to allow people just kind of vent, in a peaceful, organized way. I didn't hear all what you were saying, or what you, but our thing was, it had no racial oriented terms, ever. And like I said, it has, my feeling so, and of good, good point, migrated to include the racial part of it, and the humanity part of it. And when I was talking to the town council, and brought it in front of them, I said this, we're not asking any more from you guys, other than this, to reaffirm, and I'm not sure what line is in, but the Declaration of Independence, to stand up and say, ladies and gentlemen, we, the Board of Supervisors, reaffirm that all men are created equal. I said that to paper, and Stephanie added women, so I had women, I didn't even leave any bio, just repeating what the Declaration, that's all, that's all, what all of us are talking about. Simple as that. You guys are standing up, as the leaders of Smith County, to say, we firmly believe that all men are created equal. By doing so, we not only will stand up and say it, but we have the demands to put our signatures to it, just like we did on the Declaration of Independence, just like we did on the Constitution. That's what you guys are doing. No more, you're not putting money, you're not building a building, you're not building, you're just putting it on a piece of document, that's gonna sit in the archives, so when somebody comes for fifty or sixty years, they'll see that the Board of Supervisors in the un-forsakeable year of 2020 did something magnificent.
I emphatically agree with that.
That's, that's all we're doing. You know, we talked, you know, about different things, and the Unity Day, what started this, I still feel that that could be the day that memorializes what you, the town, have done, to reaffirm, but the Declaration of Independence, and we gotta remember, the Declaration of Independence is homegrown. It didn't come from Massachusetts, it didn't come from New York, certainly didn't come from California, it came from Virginia. So you guys are upholding your heritage, and that's what we're asking, nothing more and nothing less. Thank you, and I gotta go.
Thank you.
You have any questions, Phil? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sabrina Meadows, I live here in Marion, and I am a part of JUPC, I'm a girl.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'm here to speak as a member of JUPC, but also as a community member. First, I would like to start off by just letting you know that my husband was racist. He was homophobic and racist. And I'm so proud of him, but I'll tell you his name, his name is Alexander Meadows. He, he don't even know why he was. He, I wish he was here now, so he could tell, talk to you, but he just, he'd gotten fights, he always had the nasty things to say to people of color, it was pretty bad. Everybody knew him as a fighter, and a, you know, a racist. And when we got together, we've been together for ten years, I have gay family members. So he met them, and he fell in love with them, and he realized that his vision was incorrect, that, you know, just his whole thought process. And then, you know, I was raised, I grew up here in Marion on Iron Street, Iron Street. So I grew up with great standback, and, you know, you know, a lot of, a lot of awesome people, and, yeah, yeah. So, you know, I've never been racist, I've never raised racist, but I grew up here, and one thing that, and my mom may not have, but just about every place I've worked, you've heard a racist joke. You have. It just, it was normal, you know, somebody, somebody has told a racist joke, and we've all heard it. And, so that's a problem. Then you know racism is here, because bringing up, you get asked out on, you know, dates, somebody lets you know they're interested, and then they say, oh, but if you go to the back, man, I'm not going out with you. That has been said to me. So, and, you know, it was known, but I hung out and was friends with everyone of every color. So, you know, that was a comment that I've heard many, many times, when I was single. So it was here. We got death threats on Facebook, you know, nothing we have done has been, we haven't done any damage, we haven't been aggressive, we haven't done, everything that we've done has been out of love, you know, we did do two marches, but nobody waited, nobody waited, nobody was, you know, we were just trying to bring attention to the matter, okay? And we were getting death threats on Facebook. We still went through with it.
Did social media not reinforce that type of thing?
Not, not a whole lot, did y'all, I mean.
Wow.
We're inbox messages, we still get them, casual, wherever.
Wow. Mm-hmm. That's unfortunate. Yeah, my goodness.
So, I mean, it was, it was scary, you know, it was very scary, not knowing what was gonna happen that second march, but, you know, we went through it, we did everything we planned. So basically, we know it's here, we know it's here, we know that not everybody's gonna change their minds, we're not gonna be able to get, you know, in everyone's hearts, but it does happen. My husband is, is proof, my husband is proof. And so I have seen, yeah, all, he loves Travon to death, you know, and about anybody, I mean, he's, you know, and he's met some other people that I grew up with, and, you know, and he's receptive, he gets along with everybody, the marches, and, I mean, he's, he's changed, and I'm proud to say that. So I know it happens, I know it can happen. And we don't plan on making changes right away, but the first step is just letting everyone know, we denounce racism. You know, it's, you're either for it or you're against it, there's no gray area. It's black or white, you're either for it, or you're against it. So, and then all we're asking is just everybody denounce it. And we won't be putting white people, you know, and, and only because, I'm a white person, okay? This isn't, this isn't about me, and if you're gay, transgender, you know, you're included, you know, no matter what color. This is for the Indigenous, this is for the Black, this is for the women, this is for everybody. But we may have experienced something at one point in time, but it's not because of our skin color. There is white privilege, and I've been really welcome to talk to you, we do Zooms, we do meetings, to answer any questions, to have any type of discussion with anybody. But white privilege is not, I've struggled, I'm right now living paycheck to paycheck, but you know, I have white privilege, because I've never been attached for the color of my skin. You know, I hear brown jokes all the time, I can dye my hair, and it doesn't involve me anymore, I can't change color of my skin. I can't change that, I'm a woman, and, you know, I'm still fighting for equal pay, and, you know, things like that. So, you know, I'm sorry, we won't be including white people, but we want the unity with everyone. And white people are not, not included, it's just this movement is for the people that are fighting for inclusion, because the color of their skin, because who they are, and women. So it's, it's not, not that we have anything against white people, trust me, I mean, I'm very much for this, for this movement. But, yeah, we'll, if you have any questions, if any of you would like to have any type of discussion, again, we do Zooms, you know, we'd be happy to meet, meet with anybody to answer any questions, okay?
Thank you. I think this is where it begins, is to have a dialogue. Sabrina, I think this is where it begins, is to have a dialogue and communication.
I would like to just say, let's uphold the integrity of our county, let's uphold the integrity of our people. Let's not put the bandaid on the problem anymore, and let's face the problem so that we all can get better with the problem, and that we all may feel like we're being included. Like Sabrina tells you, her husband was racist, she tells me this story, he'll tell me this story, but it's a beautiful thing to hear how he has changed his life around, and he's not only supporting white people, black people, Mexicans, but he's supporting everybody. So, my final thought for the meeting with you is just let's uphold the integrity of our county, of our town, of our nation.
Thank you, Trayvon. Mr. Ut, do you have anything to address as far as these recommendations, those resolutions?
I guess, I guess what I'd be looking for from, from you or from the board, I can take what was said on most sides of the, of the dais here, and come up with a draft resolution that you could, you could consider at the, at the December meeting, if that's what you'd like to do.
I think, I think we're in agreement with that.
Yeah, I think it's.
Wow, I think unanimously we are.
Yes.
You all kind of got the version after we presented this one, Mary Ann, what you said, not the original version, the thought behind it, and we can also.
You have it, but you can get.
But we can send it to you guys, kind of what we initially presented, the thoughts there, the thought, a little more thought, a little more, you know, to have behind it, so you can come up with your own.
Well, I can assure you, this is a board that very much wants to see unity in our community, and to support the concerns and to be aware of them and to work towards resolving them. So, I mean, we have our commitment on that. And Mr. Ut, what can?
Action.
Okay, so Mr. Ut will brief those initial remarks and bring something back to the board. Thank you all so much, it's been very helpful.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. The committee reports continue.
I think we can't leave the presentation after which, maybe?
Right. Sabrina Meadows. Sabrina Meadows.
Okay, we'll continue on with committee reports, and it looks like lawyers are a white person to get up to a lot of the panel.
I spent the whole day here on November 5th.
So public safety committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The Public Safety Committee held a meeting on Thursday, November the 5th. The first item that we discussed is concerning our current radio system, and this is basically just for information only, but it's something that we need to keep on our radar that's going to be upcoming as next events. We currently use the V H F system, which is aging out. U H F provides in-building coverage, has a broader range than V H F, so what we're going to be doing is looking at what better serves this community. I know the sheriff and the deputy at senior can probably attest to the fact that there's certain areas in the county where to call out for help, nobody can hear you, that's certainly a situation that we don't want anybody serving public safety to be in. So we're going to be looking at that for the upcoming budget cycle, and decide what options that are available to be considered, so just wanted to plant that seed with this board. Next item we discuss is COVID-related purchases. The S T B A gear has been purchased and distributed equally to all of the agencies, and a new ambulance will be delivered soon with a lease agreement, a driving policy, and expectations of what the agency will provide to the county. That's going to be developed and presented to the, at the December Board of Supervisors meeting. We also discussed first, future emergency vehicle rotation, insurance, maintenance, and billing options. So basically, what we want to do is, there's obviously a standard out there that we have to meet for our emergency services, so, and I'm not pointing anybody out, this is just an example, but if Judy was a service provider for a certain district and she was only answering her calls 6% of the time, Judy's not going to get a new ambulance just because it's her turn. So, that's why we want to set, set an agreement in place of what those expectations are for each agency. So, and that's going to be developed and presented to this whole board, so that'll be coming up in December. We also talked about billing options, there's some agencies that are not doing billing at all, there's some agencies doing soft billing, there's some agencies doing hard billing, so what we want to do is see how we can come together at a county level and maybe take, take that billing option under the county umbrella to help all the agencies where they can have access to that billing opportunity. A motion was made by Chilhali District Supervisor Mike Sturzel for the Board of Supervisors to send a letter of support to each of the fire departments. That motion was seconded by Supervisor Ratlin. The reason that we did that, there was some confusion and some concern when a report was posted in the newspaper, and when there was also some conversations going on in the community with the former plan that was presented to us. I think a lot of the fire departments felt like they were going to be shut down, and that, unfortunately, that message got after them, and there was a lot of fear out there. So, we made a motion to send out a letter of support saying that that's not our intention, we're not working to shut down the fire departments. What we are focused on is the, I guess I could say the rescue side of it, not the fire side of it, that's what we're working to solve right now, but the fire departments itself are not issues, so. I believe, is a copy of that letter?
No, but I have a draft that can be presented at the next week's meeting, if that's, if that's not.
Okay, so this is a committee recommendation?
Yes.
Any discussion on it? If not, all in favor? Any opposed?
I vote, I voted for.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
Great, thank you. The next thing that was discussed was a presentation by Mr. Curtis Crawford with data related to call rates and response times for various agencies throughout the county. Obviously, the three of us on this committee want to be knowledgeable about what we're looking at, we're not just going to sit in a room and randomly make decisions, so Mr. Crawford, at each of our meetings, is presenting the data so that we can have a real look of response times and call volume and just things like that. So that was very helpful. The next item that was discussed was a local emergency management performance grant, and I do want to give kudos to Mr. Crawford, he was only employed here for a month and already got us the grant, which is great. These funds will be used to improve communication, develop an outreach plan, the partnerships, training, infrastructure, and for the purchase of COVID-19-related supplies, and this is a match grant, so the grant's $49,804, and then the county would have to match that $49,804, which would come from.
The CARES Act funding.
So this is not county funds, this is through the CARES Act.
I know that we're talking about, we're all over the country, we're seeing these numbers of COVID. So, in the reading, is there any update as far as how Smith County is standing as we, like historically over the last few weeks and months?
We did not specifically discuss that, but based on the emails that we are receiving from, from Daily, I do know in the last couple of weeks, we've seen a major increase in the, in the number of cases, positive cases.
It looked like sometimes when I was analyzing, like maybe 10 or so a day, is that right?
One day we experienced 26.
Yes.
So those numbers are alarming for sure.
Are those concentrated in certain areas, Mr. Ut?
It depends, honestly. One of the spikes was, of course, related to the nursing home in Chilhali. We've had a couple of family gatherings that have resulted in some high numbers poured to the health department. I think we're fortunate that that's not in the school system as heavily as it, as we feared, but a lot of it is, I would say, a good portion would be our proximity to Tennessee, Tennessee's wide open. If you look at the numbers, it's probably between Washington County and, I'm sorry, the next county south, close to 10,000 cases. And now there's probably 100,000 people or more in those two counties, but it's pretty.
But we travel back and forth to those areas a lot, don't we?
In second effect.
Yeah, Southern counties, yeah. So, anyway, we're seeing that trend just escalate all over the country and even the world, so I just, I noticed, you know, we would have had some increase, but didn't know if it was localized more in one area or whatever, but we're just continuing to be prudent.
Yes.
All right, absolutely. The next item we discussed was a review for the mass notification systems that can be purchased as part of the L E M P G grant and free notifications throughout the county. We also discussed using social media to increase the outreach. Smith County Public Safety does have a Facebook page, so anyone who would like to keep up with the COVID numbers or any type of emergency situation, certainly follow that page. I know this morning, with a lot of the flooding in the, in the county, it was something posted on there for alerts for traffic. And then the last item we discussed is the topic of information and data that we want to see in the future. Again, this goes back to my comment earlier where we want to see specific data on call times and response, or call volume and response times, so we can make the appropriate decisions moving forward. And this group is meeting on a monthly basis. We're typically meeting the first Thursday of the month at 11:00 in this room, so if anybody would like to join in on those meetings, we welcome that.
Did you have something more?
No, no, no.
Okay. We're in the committee too. Okay, that commit, that, can say that.
Yes, that's good. I'm the Public Safety Committee.
Well, and this is the last one for committee reports. Mary Ann Charlie Atkins is the chairman of the Budget Committee, and he is excellent to discuss, so we've been counting enough to offer steps to do that report.
Certainly, I'll try to be brief, we've covered quite a bit.
Madam Chairman, before you move on, in this other committee, you had this $49,000 grant, does the board need to take action on that?
It was under the Budget Committee recommendation. It was information to the Public Safety, but action required, requested under the budget.
I got you. So, the Smith County Budget Committee meeting met on Friday, November 6, at 11:00 a.m. In attendance was myself, Mr. Atkins, and Ms. Wyatt. The first item that we discussed was three budget amendment requests from the school board. The first item is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. This fund will provide to the school system to purchase backpack foggers, mobile hotspots for students who need them and have cell coverage at home, and water bottle fuel stations for every school. This fund is $27,625. Do any of these individually, or all in one?
Well, there's, it'll be, since it exceeds the 1%, will the action be the public?
Okay, all right. The second item is Coronavirus Relief Fund. This fund will provide by the governor and have the same spending deadline as the county's CARES Act funding, which is spent by December 30. The superintendent is recommending the purchase of buses, Chromebooks, for teachers, and miscellaneous reimbursements for costing her last school year. The amount of CRF funds is $709,170. Third item is Smith County CARES Act funds. Following their anticipated action to approve their budget on November 9, we want to formally appropriate the county's contribution, $776,157, into fund 009. The school board's Budget Committee has approved the request and will be presented to the school board at their meeting on Monday, November 9 for consideration, which I'm assuming they approved that finance. Also, Mr. Ut presented information on emergency management grant, which I discussed in the previous conversation, for additional CARES Act funds for broadband. The D D E M grant is for an additional $49,804, and will need to be included in the budget prior to moving forward. Again, it is a local match that is required for that. The governor announced an investment into broadband networks statewide, and the county receives two local requests, one of those coming from Point Broadband to provide additional service in the Rich Valley area, and one from SmithNet to provide upgrades to the background of their services, which would increase, increase their service capabilities for an additional 1,024 customers. No county funds will be required for any of these requests.
Lori?
Yes.
May I ask, I noticed with Point Broadband, there's a match required, and for SmithNet, there isn't, just for my personnel.
I'll answer that. It wasn't required, but Point Broadband decided to provide something, basically if they're in kind, they're going to be selling it themselves for both of them. So it's not necessarily cash out, but they're, you know, it's costs.
It's their match, not our match. If they clarify that. That's a great question.
Thank you.
So you can see in the chart there, the two applications from Point Broadband.
Well, they're great to get that service, especially like Rich Valley, and then SmithNet, is there anything coming to SmithNet?
They're still working on that over there, the piece of property they were going to put it on, they ran into an issue because of conservation easement, so they're still working diligently to get services to that community. So the total budget amendment would be in the amount of $2,141,948. A motion was made by myself to set up a public hearing at the November board meeting for December 8, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. for proposed budget amendments, and this motion was seconded by Royal Oak Supervisor Judy Wyatt, and it was unanimously approved, so that is a budget, or that is a committee recommendation.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? It passes unanimously.
The next item we discussed, Mr. Ut presented information from the Commissioner Reddy's office regarding properties that have qualified for enterprise zone program and related incentives. At the September 8 board meeting, the board voted to approve his Mountain View properties and Richards Commercial properties. The commissioner is requesting to add in Royal Oak Real Estate LLC to the list. The value of the increase in assessment is $8,867.69, which is the amount requested to be exonerated for the enterprise zone program. A motion was made by myself to approve the enterprise zone program request, and seconded by Royal Oak Supervisor Judy Wyatt, and it was approved unanimously, and that is a committee recommendation.
And to note here, this is the property across from, like, food city, and the value of that property has increased greatly, so the revenue and taxes in the future will be greatly increased, so. Okay, committee recommendation, all in favor? The most in passing?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Let me take a damn damn break, please.
Yes. 10-minute break, release us for 10 minutes and come back. I'm getting tired. Okay, I'm gonna hurry up and see if we can.
Who?
Um, Sabrina.
Well, if you talk about me, that means I've been on my job.
Okay, I think we picked up where we were all in the midst of giving the report from the Budget Committee.
Yes, that was 15 minutes ago, I already forgot where I was, I'm kidding. I think it was that. The committee discussed a request by Saltville District Supervisor Mr. Roscoe Call at the last Board of Supervisors meeting to increase the hourly rate of pay for convenience station workers effective November 1, 2020, to the new minimum wage of $9.50, that's going to go in effect January 1. Mr. Ut stated the cost of this increase prior to May 1, 2021 would be approximately $32,000 to $33,000, with savings and on-heel vacancies helping to offset that cost. After reviewing minimum wage standards and expectations, Royal Oak District Supervisor Judy Wyatt made a motion to implement a minimum wage increase to $9.50 per hour effective January 1, 2021, with a one-time $500 bonus for all full-time employees and a one-time $250 bonus for all part-time employees to be paid on November 30, 2020. I seconded that motion, and it was unanimously approved, and that discussion was had based on the county's inability to be able to give a raise this year, so we thought that bonus would be appropriated. So that is a budget committee recommendation.
Board, any discussion?
I think he deserves it.
I do too, it's going to be rough here.
I wouldn't get out of bed for $9.50.
Don't get in bed. All right. So, this is a committee recommendation, all in favor? The most in passing unanimously?
Thank you all for that, and thank you, Mr. Call, for bringing that up, I think that was a great thing it is.
It was, I commend him, he has supported them people, and, you know, I've been gone for the last couple of meetings, and he didn't drop it, he stayed with me.
I thought you weren't going to say that.
Yeah, I'm begging you.
The next item that was discussed.
Don't get me into it. Alright. So this is a committee recommendation, all in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all for that. And thank you, Mr. Call, for bringing that up. I think that was a great thing it is.
It was. I commend him. He has supported them people, and, you know, I've been gone for the last couple of meetings, and he didn't drop it. He stayed with it.
He did.
I thought you were going to say that.
Yeah, I'm begging you.
The next item that was discussed.
You better be saying two cops.
Mr. Up presented a request.
You can bring Mr. Fry to order this chairman.
I think it's Mr. Powell.
I hear the Fry.
Okay.
He might be in his market.
Mr. Up presented a request from the Commissioner of Revenue's Office for $1,778.65 refund as a part of the Veterans Tax Relief Program for property located at Skyline Drive. This is a no-brainer, so we didn't have a lot of discussion on it. I made the motion to approve the tax refund request, and Royal Oak District Supervisor Judy Wyatt seconded the motion. It was unanimously approved, and that is a committee recommendation.
Any discussion? All in favor? The motion passes.
Rob out of District Supervisor Lori Deal discussed the need for upgrading the walking track at Connerock Community Center. I asked for consideration of using $10,000 of CARES Act funds to pay for improvements to the track, since due to COVID, the residents there are limited to where they can go for exercise. Just to clarify that, the community center in Connerock, that building and facility is owned by the county, and it is utilized by the Connerock Community Center folks that operate that there. So the track does need some upgrading for it to be utilized. So that's why I inquired about that. So I did make that motion to appropriate $10,000 of CARES Act funds to the Connerock Center for walking track improvements if enough funding remains available. And that was seconded by supervisor from the Atkins District, Mr. Charlie Atkins, and Royal Oak District Supervisor Judy Wyatt abstained from the vote because she would like to see all areas of Smith County evaluated for funding consideration. We then discussed it further, talking about the Connerock area specifically. They do pay the same amount of taxes everybody else does. However, the convenience station there is Washington County. Their fire service comes from Washington County. So there are a lot of things that they don't get from Smith County, and that's why we wanted to put this funding there. So once we had that discussion, then Ms. Wyatt agreed with the motion, and it was unanimously approved. But she did want to make that motion there.
Well, my concern was that, I think that's a very worthy project, and I totally agree, that the other areas are accounted from every district, and I didn't want to see one district get more supervision than another. The other thing that we talked about, which Mr. Up's going to follow up on, that I think would be excellent, and it would benefit all citizens of Smith County, is if we could afford to do the air med fight for every citizen here, because so often now people are having to use that service, and it can be devastating if they don't have resources to cover it. So I think they're going to give that to us at some point. So anyway, this was a recommendation for the Connerock walking track. Is there any discussion?
No, I was always fought one when we get one Rich Valley.
You already have one at the school. That is, that is a good point to bring up, and I, and once we kind of discussed it and identified, all the communities have walking tracks at their schools. So Mary has one, Rich Valley has one, and the school over there. So technically.
I would ask the same thing for.
I watched you start thinking about it.
I like it when I'm not here.
No, I like it when you're.
You make me think outside the box, though.
But that was a consideration that would be fair and equal to all. So, but anyway, this was a committee recommendation. Any other comments? All in favor? The motion passes.
Great, thank you all for that. The next item the committee discussed is consideration of keeping the discretionary fund in mind when processing next year's budget. And then also, as Ms. Wyatt has already mentioned, talking about air med care network, they approached the county a few years ago, and basically if the county can pay a one-time fee per year, everybody in this county would be covered if they were, had to be airlifted in an emergency situation. I know for myself, I have a note in my wallet that says if I need to be airlifted, please call Med Flight, because I can't afford to be airlifted by any other provider, because it's expensive. So I think it's about $500 per person if you did it on an individual basis, but if memory serves me correctly, it was between $25,000 and $30,000. If the county paid for it, it would cover every single individual. And even if they were in a service area like in South Carolina on vacation and had an accident, it would still be covered there because it's a nationwide network.
What's it going to cost, I'm sorry?
The last time they presented it to us, it was between $25,000 to $30,000.
It covers, you know how many times they lift you up?
Yeah, it covers everybody and their families.
That's true.
What, what, do what then?
It's a warrant, but it depends on which one you can use.
State police one is.
State police. But Royal Oak, you can't get that one. And then in the Royal Area, you have more and more people having to use the air.
You're telling me if you had to be hand flayed out by these people.
Yes.
For the price of $25,000 or $30,000 covering your whole county, no matter how many times they lift that person.
And even if you're out of town, feeling with the state of it, so.
What are you waiting at yet?
I've reached out to the group to ask them to come, basically come and make another presentation to us, so they can give us an updated cost figure. They're working, they end up being the January board meetings. That $25,000, $30,000 may be good, it may go up, I don't know, but that's what it was.
Yeah, that was a few years ago, and it wasn't.
But I think that would be so good to the citizens of Smith County if we could do that. Because it can really be a hardship on people.
Oh, sure.
Well, all fair, come up with the price, and waiting for it to do.
Right. And that's why we want them to come back. Because I think that would be something that literally would cover every single resident of this county from zero to 110.
You know, if you need to be lifted out, it's serious.
It is serious, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I will not put a money figure on $25,000, $30,000 on my foot.
Right.
If we can, if we can afford to do this and we do it, you got my vote.
I think so, too.
Correct.
I think, yeah, but it would be the cost of like three people.
I know.
I'm sure, yeah.
I'm surprised that it's that kind of figure.
I was kind of surprised it wasn't passed when it was presented last time, so hopefully.
Well, we'll see, we'll see if we can do it.
Yeah.
Well, definitely be a great thing.
So thank you all for that. And that is all from the committee reports.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Thank you for doing all those.
My pleasure.
Okay. On new business, there's a resolution going Qualified Immunity, and Sharon, you and the sheriff are going to give information on that?
I'll see if, Sheriff, Sheila wants to do this one.
Okay. Welcome, Sheriff.
Just to digress on what you were talking about, my wife had a heart attack a few years ago when the car block bill was $38,000.
You could lose your life if you drive.
We'd make sure your sheriff and I. Happened to have the insurance, thank God.
I know.
That's a big, that's a big deal.
It is.
It is.
It'd be great if we could.
But it's hard when you, yeah.
If you're in there needing.
He was good, Johnson said he.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I leave my mask on, I don't think I had before. I do have several employees that's testing right now, that's caused this.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, terrible. Is this one of them over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I tell you, it's really bad, because it's, it's got into their families.
Oh, dear.
All children, it's got.
They're little, small ones.
Yeah.
Oh, dear.
So, but, you know, the reason I'm here is this resolution, did I have it before?
I did.
Okay. And it's for you all to oppose a legislative effort to repeal or revise the judicial doctrine of qualified immunity for law enforcement.
So moved.
I second that.
We don't even mean no further. Just give me a little quick impact, because the impact that we have on our town, you know, qualified immunity doesn't excuse me from an unlawful act. If I'm violating the law, I don't have qualified immunity. And, you know, that's a big misconception we're trying to, to get out there is, you know, this gives us a free pass. It really doesn't. It protects us from frivolous lawsuits. And I'll go back to the 1980s, the first time I got sued in this job. And it was, because my picture was on the calendar. A guy sued every member of the sheriff's office for failed to protect. Of course, it got dismissed, but I didn't even know who he was. He just got the calendar, went through and got everybody. Just gives you a general idea of what we deal with. If this goes away, you will not be able to hire law enforcement through that state of Virginia. Not for sheriffs, not for police, not for state police, because they're including everybody in on this. Where will you be able to retain anybody? Because if this goes into effect, I should be retiring probably the next day.
Wow.
Because I've worked way too hard to have what I own, house, cars. You know, the only police would be able to hire somebody who says, I don't own a car, I don't need a house, and I don't have a family. So basically, that's what this will be, do that, do that crime well. I just don't understand it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
And I'm not trying to interrupt you here, but I, I am going to speak.
Sure.
I don't think people realize where we're at on threshold right now with our police people. And it, you put it exactly right. If they take it away where a police officer can't go in a situation and no, if he's thinking in the back of his mind about getting sued, if he, if he kills that assailant, he's going to lose his life. And what this guy's telling you may be very, very traumatic for us, because if they take this immunity away, anybody that's even close to retirement, they're getting out.
Of course, sure.
Anybody that's worth their salt, they're going to find another job.
Where they're respected.
And I'm telling you right now, I got a son that's a trooper, love of my life. But you're not going to abuse him. But I, I don't care what your politics is right now, every move he needs to make, needs to go to make sure this don't happen. You need to think about every single thing we do. You can't do this to the police people. Now, what happens here? And I wanted to bring this up earlier, but I didn't. You take one bad situation, and you bring every policeman in the world. Can't do it. You can't do it. You ruin your good people. And I know you want to talk, and I'll let you talk. But when this resolution comes up, we need to send a message up the road that we are totally against this. Every Smith County ever was. You can't buy the whole police. And you know what, if I was a police officer, you know what I'd want? I wish they could do? Shut down for 30 days.
Thirty minutes?
Y'all take care of it.
Really, yeah.
We'd, we'd appreciate these people a lot, lot more. We would. And there's, our government right now, they're scaring them. And these good officers that don't need to listen to it, they're not going to put up with it. What are you getting next? Somebody that only worked for $9.50, so he's going to do a job working $20,000? You don't have no idea what a police officer is. It's bred in you. You don't train it, it's bred in you. There's only a few people can do it and do a good job. That's why you see a bad situation every now and then that didn't work out, because those people probably didn't even need to be cops. But the good cops, they don't need to have a whole lot of training. It's inside them, on shares. So, you know, if you want to keep talking.
You guys standing behind you, we do this job, and I can tell you, I do this job. I've done this job 37 years. And it's because, because I love my community. I lay my heart out there for anybody here, anybody out there. And my debties over there would be the same thing. That's, that's why you do it. It's because you love your community, you love your people, and you want people to do right. And I've got some really good people. I mean, I'm really good because they make them, period.
How many officers would you lose if this goes, you think? I mean, I'm sure your chief deputies.
I mean, I was around them through the department, said 5% of them better would leave.
We're really going to be there. It ain't going to matter what kind of unity we got.
But I live here.
The cooks don't want no unity.
I mean, we live here, and this is, this is our home, and we have to have.
But they don't like a lot of money here.
We have to have rules, it's, you know, we have to have rules. And, and we have to have someone to make those rules work. And that's how it keeps society livable. And yes, we've seen some bad things happen. Bad things hap, bad people getting off of professions. We know that. There's not a profession out there that hasn't had a, a shameful event happened, and, and, and that's just human nature.
Ain't nobody made it to heaven yet.
If you don't.
You know.
If you don't punish.
There's a lot of people make mistakes, even us.
Yeah.
But, but, but also, this has a bottom line to it. The cost to the county would be enormous to pick up insurance that risk management now carries for all of us. It would be incredible. And you couldn't expect an officer to, I mean, my, my debties are, some of them are barely above the food stamp line. I mean, really, hospital bills and payments are barely above the food stamp line. And it's a matter of time that those guys are not doing the job because they love their community. I'm, I'm, there's a rule with that, so.
They sure ain't there to get rich.
No, they're not. No, they're not. But, you know, I, I just, if they can send a message up the road, this is, this, this will be the evidence to law enforcement. You got, you got karma. Not just sheriffs, not just me, but everybody, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I'm going to answer. I usually like to stay for the whole meeting.
You got to leave?
I got to leave.
No, that's chicken.
But I thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Lori, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, you did.
Oh, did you?
You did, I expected.
I'll second it, but I would like for Chairman to go first, but one that really sends our message. Is it here?
926.
All right, I'll read it. I'll second it. Go ahead, we get out of here.
All right, um, favor. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to circle back to a decision that we did at the last meeting. I'm not sure what the appropriate protocol is to revisit a subject.
Uh-huh.
Specifically, I'm referring to a recommendation that came out of the Water and Sewer Committee with respect to their diligence. More information is coming to light. Is it appropriate to?
Can we do that to your supervisor comments, huh?
Is that, is that a?
That's fine. I just want to be proper.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do something.
I see a missing.
Right, we'll do that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Can we send the agenda? Is the report from the county attorney?
Madam Chairman, I don't have anything to report at this time, so plugging away at it.
Okay, thank you. And you have a report from the county administrator and staff?
I wish I could be like the county attorney and say there's no report. There are a few things, you'll have a, you should have a summary at your, at your desk. There's five actual items, and I'll be as brief as I can. First two deal with revenue sharing. The first one is, if you may remember, well, actually, I don't know if anybody was on the board here at this time, but we did a revenue sharing project out of Colcreast subdivision in the Chilhawee area back in the mid 2000s, 2004, 2005 time frame. And at that point, the people were, the citizens, of course, are given 10 years to pay their portion of the, of the match. There were two properties that did not pay. One of them trained, changed hands, has changed hands twice. And the most recent one, gentleman, received a bill from the treasurer's office because back in the, back in the 2000s, these agreements were filed with judgments rather than with deeds. So it's harder for a title company to find it. Not that they shouldn't have, shouldn't have found it, but it was, it is more difficult. So the title insurance company is willing to pay the amount due because it's not the property owner's responsibility at this point, because it should have been paid when they bought the property. However, the amount due is total, you'll see there, is $3,033.60. Of that, $2303.63 is, is the principal, and 700, just shot $730 in interest. They are asking if you would be willing to forego the interest in lieu of the, of the principal payments. So the request is basically to forego the $729.97 of interest if it's paid within 30 days.
Did you pay your?
I did, 10 years.
Can I comment?
Sure.
These people that didn't pay, I'm just wanting. These people that didn't pay, I'm just wondering if one of the people come in and signed to get the percentage to get it in?
I'm not sure. The, the, the problem, the folks that, that were billed didn't own it when it was signed, so this, they're actually this, the second property owner after. So, so John Doe signed it in two thousand four, they sold it in twenty twelve. Whoever bought it in twenty twelve sold it in twenty fifteen.
And nobody ever paid.
Because it was in the-
Well, you said that I decided Supervisor paid his ten years.
I did, they had it on, probably taxes for ten years.
These people won this, they come in here and won it. I get the title company didn't find it.
And the title company is the one that's one, not the, the, the-
I'm sorry, it's got an interest on it.
All I built, all I, all I told them was I'd present to the, to the board.
We would have charged any homeowner there, and it'd been Mr. Sturgill before he comes Supervisor, and I'd still charge him. You pay your bills, you don't pay your bills, when you buy a piece of property, it goes the all of it, so. Do you know if the original signers of that document still ran?
I have no idea, I'm sorry.
They should live in the county, they should be paid.
Sure.
But is it the title company's fault?
That's why they're offering to pay.
It's the title company's fault.
They didn't find the lien, they didn't find the lien.
Yes.
So maybe they should pay all of it.
And that's why they're offering. They basically are, you know, we're gonna pay, but it'd be nice to have to pay us seventy dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, they'd like to save themselves some, uh, some, seven hundred and some dollars on their mistake, but you know what? I'm sorry, you gotta pay the search.
Yeah.
And, and somebody owes it. There was agreement made with this county, uh, agreement, signed in a contract.
Sure.
But it wouldn't be fair to the other landowners that did pay.
They took us three, like, three hundred dollars.
A year, yeah. And there's only one other one that, that hasn't, um, paid their portion of the Colcrest subdivision.
I'm making a motion to not pay the whole amount. I'll give you a second, but I'm-
Motion, a second, do you have a second?
I'll do it.
All right, favor.
Okay. The next item is another revenue sharing, sadly. Good news is, we, we received word that the Green Acres subdivision revenue sharing project is funded. The bad news is, it's not funded until twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. So, we have that money in our budget that's basically rolled over, I guess, for the last couple of years. At some point, we need to figure out, think of what to do with that money. Maybe it just goes back into general fund reserves, and we pull it back out in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Is that the one behind, is that Chilhawee?
It is.
Is that the one behind me?
Yes, it is.
So, they, the Commonwealth Transportation Board took all revenue sharing statewide, and, um, instead of funding it throughout the six-year plan, they funded it all in the last year of the six-year plan. Mostly because they don't, uh, the coronavirus, um, they don't know what that's gonna affect long-term wise with, um, transportation taxes.
That's gonna break a lot of people's heart down there, they gotta get that.
Sean, can I speak to that?
Please.
I'm hoping I talked to this about it, that possibly, that DDOT may look at another possi- I, I understand what they designed it and what they did, and I understand why the landowners would not want what DDOT's, or what the engineer proposed. I'm just wondering if there's another solution that, that possibly might be acceptable to those landowners there that, so.
Yeah, the, the one I would throw out, I guess, and not knowing the full situation, is a question of whether the landowners looking for someone to plow the snow or with, for new asphalt. You've got a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars change in, in the budget. If those landowners would sign that ten-year agreement, we could go and pave that road for the hundred and twenty-five thousand. Problem is, there's no, the BDOT doesn't come through and, and plow the road if it, when the snow's on the, on the ground. So, I would hazard a guess that there's probably a, a bigger issue than even having it paved, but.
So, you would go ahead and pave it for the hundred and twenty-five thousand, but it wouldn't be state maintained, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, if, if the board, that would be one option, if the board wanted to. I would expect you would want all of the owners to have signed this same repayment agreement, because it's not, right now, it's basically, you're financing that for them.
Sure.
So they would pay it back over the ten years. Uh, but that certainly would be an option, but, um, again, you know, there's no one to maintain it.
Okay.
This is the real kicker.
Yes.
So, from a tax perspective, how would I pay, really affecting bumping taxes? Would they go up?
I would expect it to increase slightly, but, I mean, yeah.
Not enough to offset it?
I would think that it would probably, and this is my uneducated guess, but I would think it would be a higher value increase if it was on VDOT road versus a private road. Versus paid, versus, you know, what it is now.
If you don't get VDOT to take it over, you're fighting a losing battle. Because in a year of time, it's gonna have potholes and-
It's gonna be torn up.
The main, it's, and then who's gonna maintain? You got every, how many houses living there, I'm guessing, who, who's, who's gonna get the pot open?
I did ask them if there were any other options, any other, uh, VDOT programs, uh, but there's, there aren't any, anything short of, um, the subdivision pulling together, bringing it up to the, the standards, and they wouldn't accept it, but that's the two hundred and fifty dollar dollar cost. So that's just information, no, no action necessary.
This is in Josh.
The next item, you, you may remember the Speyside Poop Ridge, the wine barrel, not wine barrel, the whiskey barrel, manufacturing Atkins. They are on a three-year, um, COF performance agreement. They were delayed on the hiring process due to COVID. Uh, they have made much more than their expected investment. They've invested thirty-three million versus the commitment of twenty-five million, but they're only at twenty-eight employees. They need to be at a hundred and twenty-eight employees at the end of year three. They are halfway through the process, so they're basically eighteen months in. They're asking for a fifteen-month extension, um, to get to the hundred and twenty-eight so that, um, they can, they can meet the, the performance agreement. State is supportive, but the first step is for, um, formal approval by the board, since we're, um, uh, signatories to the-
I'm willing, Mrs. Chairman, to give them their fifteen months, start making an effort.
I'll second it.
Um, favor. You know, I feel very strongly that we need to do everything we can to support existing industries and to encourage them any way that we can. And, uh, I know we always want to recruit, but what we have, we need to support also.
Sure. Uh, the next item, you know, we've talked about, I, I presented the board retreat option idea at the last meeting. Just to give you an update, I've talked to some folks around the region, to get some ideas and some options. Uh, there are two different facilitators that we can bring in. I personally think I could do it, but I personally think it would be best for the board and for the county to have someone that's not invested in the county, not an employee of the county, completely independent, to come in and help walk through the, the process. So, one option would be a, uh, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Neal gave me this, uh, lead, uh, Vice Chancellor over at UVA Wise, that does a lot of facilitating. Uh, another option is a, um, a company called the Berkeley Group. They're basically a group of retired administrators, superintendents, sheriffs, that formed a, a, a company to, to provide services just like this. Grand scheme of things, depending, no matter where we meet, um, and who facilitates, I expect it's gonna be about a five thousand dollar cost overall, uh, just to, to get it done. So what you'll end up with is a, is a, a roadmap for, uh, what the board wants to do. Um, it's something I can use in the budget development, something that, uh, we can use in the next couple of years to, to make sure that, that we're, we're going down the right path.
But one thing I have is, I would like to see it, if we do it, be at a local place that would benefit monetarily from it.
Yeah, the two fault, the two, uh, options for a big enough space was the Hemlock Haven at Hunger Mother and the, uh, Holston Hills Golf Course has a big enough area.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I think this is really important, uh, for us, especially moving forward. I think it's imperative for us to know where we're going, particularly when we're talking about budget and different things like that. If I'm sitting in a room and deciding the budget for this county and how we're gonna spend taxpayer dollars to the best of our ability, um, we need to know where we're going and not just pull decisions out of the sky. So, I think this is important, and I would love to see it happen, and, and I'll make a motion that week.
Well, and also, Lori, if I could just add, it gives each board member here an opportunity to have input. It's not just committee-based, getting all this information. So I think that's always a good thing. So you have a motion?
I'll second it.
Um, a motion, then second, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Uh, the final item is, uh, dealing back with our audits and, and the CARES Act. Uh, the auditors are recommending that we adopt two different policies, no action necessary tonight. I'd, I'd like to go ahead and add this to the agenda for next week, but I don't want you to reach, to, to have it. A conflict of interest policy, we currently have a conflict of interest incorporated into our personnel policy, but it's not specific to the board and to the governing oversight. This policy does help, does bring those federal requirements into, into play, so, um, then the other item is for, um, it's basically dealing toward grant administration and financial management protocols, uh, a uniform guidance for, um, you know, who's, who does what and, and what, uh, what the expectations are of the board. So I'd like you to-
Is it like for internal control, Sean?
Internal control, yes, ma'am.
Internal control, okay.
Um, but I, I will have these on the agenda for next week, and if, as you go through them, you can call me if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. But I, like I said, these are, um, strong recommendations, some of the requirements from our auditors based on the, uh, CARES Act fronts. And that's my report.
Well, next on the agenda is Supra, the County Attorney. Mr. Connaughton, if you'll start with you.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to apologize to Lori and Chris for missing the building and grounds committee meeting.
We missed you.
I try not to do that, but that day I had some issues. Recently, I had a pacemaker put in. I went from a heart rate of thirty to between sixty and eighty, and lost thirty-eight pounds. And that day, I had, I had recently purchased a new backhoe in my house. And with the early getting of my, I started, my eyes started just getting real dilated, like I've been to an eye doctor. No pain at all or anything, so I made it to a chair on the porch and sat down and come to ten minutes late.
Oh, goodness.
Well, I got to Doctor, I got to the doctor, and I was on a hundred and forty milligrams of blood pressure medicine, now I'm on twenty.
Wow.
I was overloaded on, because of the weight loss, I was overloaded on blood pressure medicine, and so everything's good now, so that's why I wasn't here.
Well, you're always here, so we, we were keeping you in prayers, that's for sure. I'm glad you're feeling better.
I had to die in and thank God for it. It's a blessing.
That's great.
I'm gonna keep going, try to lose fifty more, and turn this one upside down one of these days and bump his head on.
You should tell him that, mate.
I don't think so.
How about you, Mr. Stevenson?
Here he is gonna turn me upside down. I was gonna tell him that, you know, I have a lot of respect for him. He's, he's a real good supervisor. I'm really glad he's health's all right, and he's here, and-
He's my cousin, too.
He's your cousin?
Yes, sir, yeah.
But, you know, he is a good supervisor, and I, I, I'm in my second term and spent four years with Roscoe, and, well, you just shut up. You know, I got a lot of respect for him, and I don't think you'll ever lose enough weight where you can turn me upside down, but that's the God's point. On the other hand, just shut up, you had your time. I missed a couple of meetings. I apologize, it's my busy time of year. One of them was my annual visit to UVA since my sickness that I do not avoid. The other is, uh, like I say, it is my busy time of year, and I piss my ass off, but I am seeing some things tonight that the committee had done, Chris, all three of yous, uh, on emergency services on, on, uh, on med flight. Y'all've done a good job on a lot of this, and you've been open-minded about it, and, and I appreciate that. You know, I'm here for the county, I'm not here for Phil Stevenson. If I was here for Phil Stevenson, I'd never be here, I'd be doing something I like. But I appreciate your job y'all have done. I ask you to keep an open mind on everything you see tonight. I'm not gonna comment a lot on it, but I do ask you to keep an open mind and, and move forward with anything with caution. If one thing I've learned in four years, going on five, is sometimes get all the information you can get. See what the fallout's gonna be. I try to do that, that's why I keep us here sometimes. I don't make, I always make the right decision, and I always hope this board supports our law enforcement. I really do. And, you know, I, I kinda, when this guy first showed up here the first night, I didn't like how he was getting paid.
I reduce that, by the way.
Now, you are, you set this idea some years ago. But he's done a good job, and I feel real good about him sitting there. He's, he's done a good job, he's-
Thank you.
He's a good man. And whether I like you or not, I'll say whether you're gonna pay me. But I do wanna say that, so thank you all.
That's a real compliment, Scott.
I'm gonna, you know, I will be missing some meetings, so you'll just have to forgive me, because I, I do have to make a living this time of year.
You're always with us in our heart.
Well, I hope so. Sometimes I don't know what I'm over here, but I'm like, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Phil, we're glad you're here. Mr. Sturgill?
I'd just like to say, I, I like the support I see in this board. I think we're all here to try to make Smith County the greatest place we can possibly make it, for a place to live, that's through supporting our agencies, uh, what we can do to make our walking tracks, whatever we do, we wanna make Smith County the best place we can possibly make it to live. And I think that's what our goal in the decision-making process will be.
Well, I would just like to say how much I appreciate all the effort of all of us working together, uh, for Smith County this year. I think we've had a lot of challenges, and we've made a lot of progress, and each board member has been so wonderful to work with. And, um, I feel like we are trying to do the best we can for the citizens, and that's our goal and mission, and glad to have a county administrator, our new county attorney, and each one of you, I really value and respect, and I'm so thankful for your input and for your support.
My turn, thank you. I just wanna bring up a couple of things. One, um, came up to my attention because of the flooding this morning. Um, we had a lot of concerns from folks on Route eight hundred on Sinclair's Creek, which is actually the line between my district and Mr. Sturgill's district, um, particularly from intersection of Route six oh four, uh, down to Route thirteen ten, um, those intersections at Route eight hundred. Uh, the residents there had expressed their concern with some improvements that VDOT made, and the improvements actually seem to have made it worse when it comes to flooding that area. So, I do have one of these little handy-dandy forms that I'm filling out, so I'll hand that in to you all, but I did let those citizens know that I would bring that up, uh, so you all can check in with VDOT on that. Uh, second thing is, just wanna let everybody know, a business in my district, Casey's diner reopened, they had some issues with COVID nineteen, uh, but they, they did reopen. Uh, they have a new menu to do the thing, so just head on out and visit them. Speaking of businesses impacted by COVID, uh, one thing that I would like either from, maybe on our next, uh, agenda, is a report about the Smith Strong Fund and the businesses that were awarded that, if that program has been, uh, the money, program has been distributed. I'd like to see a report, uh, so we can know who we funded for that, and just a, a general update from that group. Uh, next, Charlie Atkins is not here, but, uh, he did wanna make an appointment for the Economic Development Authority. He reached out to, to Mr. Redwood and myself, so he asked that one of us would, would make the motion to do that, but you want me to?
You go ahead, yeah.
So I'd like to, uh, make a motion to appoint Mr. James McNeil to the Economic Development Authority to serve for the Atkins district.
Okay.
Um, favor? Motion approved.
Great, thank you for that. Great. Thank you for that. And then, the next item that I wanted to bring up, I know we've had a couple of folks resign slash retire this year, and then we've got an upcoming retirement from Ms. Diane Spence in the IT Department, Mr. Charlie Harrington as our EMS coordinator formerly, and Mr. Ron Thompson from the tourism. I know those three individuals specifically put in decades of work for this county. And if it's appropriate, this board, I'd like to recognize those folks for their service at one of the upcoming meetings.
I think we've talked about that, Lori, and I think that was already recommended.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I just know those three are, if there are others, please include them, but just to make sure we thank them for their service because they've dedicated quite some time. And then lastly, I just want to thank this board for their efforts to, to work together, and I'm excited to see the things that we're going to do moving forward, and I'm, I'm thankful for all of our different viewpoints and opinions because it certainly helps us make better decisions. So, and I like it when Phil asks questions because I'm a question asker, too.
Thank you, Lori. Thanks, Ake.
Yes. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Lori. Dr. Martin.
All right. I've got a few things I want to, I want to mention. One, with the current apparent uptick in COVID, just a real quick couple of health things. Asymptomatic patients have been discovered to be spreading the virus for an extended period of time, so there's, there's an extended latency of exposure, even though somebody may not know they're sick, based on the knowledge we had four, five months ago. To ducktail on that, the city of Chicago is going to enforce a stay-at-home order starting Monday. So I say that just to kind of reemphasize that this is seriously not going away, so we need to be cautious. Second comment is, I would like to commend Supervisor DeWitt for her leadership on the EMS committee as we address the emergency needs across the county through a myriad of buckets that we have to look at. I'd also like to commend the school board and their handling of the COVID. Quite honestly, it's my opinion, and it's a no-win situation. Whatever decision they come down on, they're going to have the people mad at them, have the people support them, just like being a referee. So all I can say is, kudos to them for tackling a tough subject and trying to make the right decision. And I'll live with whatever they do and support them 100%. Lori has done the James McNeil thing. I have two other things of older business I'd like to address. One of them is, I think it's a procedural matter. There was a motion put before the board last meeting with regard to an Ashton Lane property that is apparently in foreclosure by the Bank of Marion, and it's, also has an outstanding water bill. The bank has reached out to me and asked that we consider a forbance on the outstanding water bill. Apparently, the way it was put to me is, if, if we don't give them some sort of forbance on this $18,000-plus outstanding bill, that property is going to sit there on the books and live anywhere, anything. The persons that are occupying the building can't be foreclosed and are moved from the building, so the bank can't foreclose on their property. We're not going to collect on the water, and I dare say, we didn't pay the property, excuse me, they didn't pay their mortgage, they didn't pay their water bill, they didn't pay their taxes. So that's probably the, the front also. So my ask of the board is to, I guess, make a motion to allow Mr. Utter to enter into a negotiation with the, with the Bank of Marion to, to land at a number that makes the county hold on the lost water revenue, the basic fee which comes to, what was that number, 26? I'm sorry, you gave it to me.
Around $2,000, around $2,500.
Roughly $2,500. There is some extra penalties that goes in there that's jacked it up to somewhere around $18,000. I would like to see this moved off the county's books and gets off the tax registry, that gets it off the foreclosure books of the, of the bank, and we get a property that can be flipped into another person that could, could buy it and live in it and become a productive member of society here, because otherwise they're just going to sit there and plod off.
Where is the profit, Atkins?
It is the, what was the?
It's Ashton Lane.
Ashton Lane.
Building 16.
Ashton Lane still a river now?
It's still occupied, yes, sir.
The water's still, huh?
But it's not our water. It's just our sewer, correct?
Yes, it's the county sewer. Town Marion, I believe, has some water, possibly, probably a well. It's a sewer, but not a water dish.
So, I didn't plug it yet.
I have the cost estimate. The health department down here is different than the health department I was dealing with in the previous location, and they are strongly against plugging a sewer line with someone, knowing someone is, is living in that, at the risk.
Are they saying we can't do it?
Didn't say they can't. We could, but they were not, they weren't supportive at all. It was not a positive conversation.
And this is, was a committee recommendation, and you want to go against what you voted on in the committee and make another motion?
Yes, sir. That, that is correct. After speaking with the bank representative, it was, it was said that if we don't reverse it, they're just going to put it in the drawer and say something.
Yeah, I do, and I'm not trying to interrupt you. I heard all that from them in the committee meeting, but may I ask the attorney where we're at on this? Is this all up and up or what?
Well, I don't, I don't remember what the motion was that passed by the board. Had the request been made to forego the water, the sewer bill before?
Yes.
And you voted on it?
It was, it was made to the, to the Water Sewer Committee. The committee recommended not approving it, and the board approved the committee's recommendation.
Was it, so, it's a procedure question, so if it was unanimous vote, you need a motion to reconsider by someone on the prevailing side?
It was unanimous.
So if it's unanimous, you're making the motion to reconsider, and then you just revote. It's a Robert's Rules issue.
So, so we are within the proper procedure to execute this request?
Yes, correctly, because you're bringing them, you're bringing it back up on a motion to reconsider, and you were on the prevailing, I think it's the prevailing side has to bring it up.
And you will vote with acceptance, you can call for a revote.
And I did vote to accept the, the recommendation of the subcommittee.
So you can retract that?
Yes. And the message I got from the bank is, it's going to sit there and do nothing with it, and they're going to continue to occupy the property. And it's going to potentially deter on property values of the surrounding properties near it, and upset on the tax records as well.
You want to make a motion that we reconsider subject, can you?
Yes. So the wording would be to make a motion to reconsider the recommendation.
And send it back to the committee.
With the extended to allow Mr. Utter to negotiate to land on a number that is acceptable to the county, not less than the outstanding sewer bill, but the ability to, to land at a compromised number so the bank can move forward and get this done.
Okay.
Is that, is there a chance to make?
And clear or closed, make the process.
Yes.
And is that ideal?
I'm not clear if it's something that...
So you're just bringing it back to the entire board again, is that right, Sean? Yeah. Okay, so second?
I'm second.
One suggestion.
One question?
If the bank, if we approve this, and the bank forecloses, sells to somebody else, and they make over what is owed on it, the bill should be paid.
Yeah, the discount in the bill is only if they need it to sell it.
That's right. I think, I think that would be justifiable.
Most likely are not going to do that, but it needs, I think it needs to be in the contract.
Any so far whatsoever comes to the county until our bill's paid, but we'll discount to this dollar or whatever that is for the sale.
Allow the bank to get hold of it. They'll recoup their money.
So, profit. And we'll make it in the language so that they can at least be neutral, I want to neutral on it. Not just on profit, but neutral in...
If there's a profit, that's a profit. Okay. So that's your motion.
Well, he, he's made the motion to allow the administrator, to essentially reverse your position, to allow the administrator to negotiate that deal. And then the administrator to negotiate the deal, then he'll bring it back to you and say, here's what the bank wants, are you guys okay with this? And then you go, yes.
If you want to amend your motion, uh, motion to it, that if they do sell it, I mean, their sales pitch don't scare me. This is the reason I want to miss it. But if they, something covers us, if they sell it for more, and we get reimbursed, I'm good with it.
Okay, so we have the motion. It's clear. We have a second?
I have a second.
Um, favor.
You will need your motion.
Yes, correct. I made it, uh, with supervisor Stevens.
Get our news.
Uh, addition there. So, Mr. Rattler, you reach out to Ms. Dancy, or do you want me to? You, you call me directly, because I'll just, I'll get in the middle and mess it up.
I can.
One more comment. To follow up on the last meeting, we had a gentleman named Lori Parks come and present a question before the board, asking for some relief on some stuff, issues that are not being, apparently not being addressed. I don't want to throw them in the class. I don't know where we're at with that. I see Mr....
Sean is going to follow up on that.
So we're working through the, so the previous zoning violations were rectified, but then they've gone back. So we're going through the zoning processes, the nuisance abatement or whatever the zoning process is right now. The letters have been sent. I guess the next step would be, if they don't clean it up, just go back to court again. So we are going through the process, and we...
Yeah, the letters have been sent, and I don't know if it's 30 or 45 days' notice, you know, and then at that point, at the end of that 30, 45 days, then I got to get in gear and file suit.
Yeah.
So, I guess my ask on this is, is it possible to put this on the agenda in perpetuity under old business until this is resolved and off the books, so we don't let this slide under the rug? We at least press it and say, we got a report to say where we're at?
Okay. We can, we can put it under the county administrator report or county attorney report.
We just put it as a line item, like section A, whatever that thing's called.
I would like that to...
I will say that, that this will be a highlight to show how slow government can work and courts can work.
It will take a very long time.
It will be, because the courts aren't hearing very many cases right now, so honestly, truly, it can take six, eight months in our reality.
Well, I think we owe it to Mr. Parks to at least keep it on the front burner for us to be aware and not let it slide into the dark. And of course, the other thing is the burning question of broadband service. I'd like to see that kind of forefront, quick bullet point every meeting to say, where are we in the, in the evolution of it in the county? Because the school board needs the fast speed, business needs the fast speed, and the homes need it as well. We're going to maintain social distancing, you know, no learning and working. We need this. So now's the time to jump on it. Let's get it going, and I think we need to be in the forefront to pay attention to it. And with that, I have a couple more questions, but I'm going to stop, and we'll talk about those later. But that's, that's it. I'm required. Thank you.
If you have a couple more questions?
No, that's the, that's the highlights, my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda. We are going into closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to motion to go into closed session based on Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711A8, consultation of legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding a proposal from Smith County Community Foundation.
I have a second.
Um, favor. We're now in closed session.
Dr. Robson.
We're going to...
Okay, we'll make a, make a motion to go out of closed session.
Second?
Second.
Um, favor.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make this, a motion for this following resolution for closed session, whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors has convened in a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Smith County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Smith County Board of Supervisors.
So, second?
I have a second.
Um, favor. With, with it in place for the business on the agenda, we will adjourn this, we will continue this meeting.
Recede the next day.
And we will continue this meeting, central November 18th at 7:00.
Thank you.
That was a super fast one.
Oh, really? I'm like, what? How long's your business, Sean?
I'm probably going to the CDC.